Hold it, read it.
I am calling this meeting to order at 7:00 PM on March 25th, 2020.
Please, please read your statement.
Before we do that, let's say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Anyone wish to say a prayer?
The joint statement.
Anyone wish to say a prayer?
Mr. Volta Lini and Mr. Rob.
You are out of order, sir.
That sound? It's still in the same area of the door, you're going. That sounds like no picture.
Can they hear us?
Should be able to, it looks like it's picking up the sound. Didn't you do anything? Well, I shut it off when we started.
Okay, if anyone in the audience would like to videotape or with your camera on your phone, just so that we have a video of the happiness fix, apparently it's not going to work.
Shotgun over.
We have quality, if we have sound though, that would be.
Yeah, the only problem is that oftentimes the sound is muddy because it picks up a lot of noise and you can't actually hear what's being said.
Chief Barber, are you trying to reboot it now?
The only way to reboot the computer now is actually reboot it from inside the ceiling or you either pause for a while to reboot or we can.
There, you even have.
I say we need to reboot the, this needs to be recorded.
Is there a laptop?
Senator, I'd like to make you aware that speech is not disorderly conduct and the only one that can tell you to quit talking in this council meeting is the President of the Council.
If I leave this here.
Was that your job? Leave the light on, that's your job.
No, why did you keep this plug dead?
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
She was tampering once earlier, I think it's worth getting her out of here.
I thought that was for the building. They didn't get out really soon.
It's sort of.
I gotta keep this down, we trick on.
Order, everyone, we're going to continue with the meeting. If you don't mind.
We have a statement being made by Mr. Rob and.
You are out of order, sir, I am still speaking. Mr. Barber stated that the thing is live, it's just not showing it on our side, but it is showing it on that side, okay? Just so everybody knows where we are.
Go ahead, Susan. This is a joint statement from Mr. Rob and Mr. Volta Lini. We've been in conversations together in an effort to jointly resolve the issues facing city council. We haven't discussed the merits of any one individual's claim, including the respective claims of each of us, just the general issues of the council going forward for governing the city. Conversations regarding these issues have also included extensive conversations with the Office of the Ohio Attorney General. Therefore, we sit here together tonight for the good of the people of Melsville and stand ready to assist the city together per the suggested ordinance that will be addressed later tonight.
That's it?
That's it.
Further, if we may.
Please.
It is our opinion as parliamentarians and as attorneys that this meeting cannot go forward until we decide, not we, until the council decides who are the proper seven to sit. Otherwise, you cannot hold a meeting, that's our opinion together. If I may.
Please. Mr. Volta Lini, I think the charter is clear, council is seven members.
So you're suggesting that we not hold this meeting tonight?
We're not suggesting, you can't hold a meeting with nine or 10, it has to be seven. And unless you can't agree on seven, you can't have a meeting, that's our, that's our opinion, okay?
Let's call the roll, please.
You're not the president. Stop pretending to be the president.
Point of order, you are not the president. Susan, Mr. Taylor.
Assistant of Melsville.
The sonic mayor.
Here.
It's something scary. Flowers?
Yep.
Here.
Okay. Minutes from the last regular meeting, we have three minutes.
You are out of order, sir, you are not the president of this council. Once again, you are not the president of this council. I also did not receive any minutes because you all turned off my email. So I was not able to receive any correspondence from Susan. So at this point, as Mr. Volta Lini and Mr. Rob stated, we cannot go forward with any part of this meeting until the main question has been answered. And that is, who are the people legally on council?
Mr. President, if I may, I think we just called roll.
You are out of order, Corey.
Point of order, if we may.
You are out of order.
Thank you. So the minutes from.
Mr. Taylor, Mr. Clement.
Yes.
It's our, both as parliamentarian and lawyers, it's our opinion that there's, there is a conflict as to who is properly on city council. You cannot, nobody, Ms. Nguyen, you, nobody can unilaterally say this is council. There are 10 people sitting in this room who have a legal, legal claim to sit on city council. Until that is decided, you cannot hold a meeting.
Right.
That's our legal opinion and that's our parliamentarian opinion.
Then we are done.
Do you suggest that be resolved?
So Mr. Volta Lini and I, this was, we've had extensive discussions about that. I've personally spoken extensively, as Madam Clerk indicated, with the Ohio Attorney General about this. It may require a judicial ruling. Now, how that would be brought is itself a challenge. Just the legal mechanics. One possibility, this is actually the suggestion of the Ohio Attorney General, and if I may, as an aside, this is a deeply serious issue that the city faces. I apologize for the strong wording, but the only wording that I can think of is highly irregular to describe the circumstances that the city finds itself in. What that means is the possibility of the Ohio Attorney General getting directly involved at some point is higher than the ordinary base law. That's, that's a warning. Mr. Volta Lini and I have discussed ways in which it may need the city manager to initiate legal action to get a declaratory judgment from a court of competent jurisdiction to, to provide a definitive ruling on the charter language with respect to filling vacancies with council. As an aside, I would caution you, caution the members of the public, that issue is not as necessarily clean to cut as one might think. There are scenarios where, and I'm not saying any one of these scenarios is correct or incorrect, I'm just saying there are actually three scenarios. A court could find that the answer to that number is four, the answer to that number is three, and in fact, in the circumstance that faced, faced council right now, it could even be two. And I would encourage you, if you haven't considered how it could be two, to study the law and how that could be. Because that, although that may not be what a judge would say, there is a possibility that that's the number. So I would, I would strongly urge you and I, and Mr. Volta Lini and I, again, have had very extensive conversations. I appreciate his professionalism and his collegiality through this, but absent a court ruling definitively.
We, we also, funny, we also had proposed the idea of the, the the seats that are in dispute recuse themselves without giving up any legal rights, let the elected six serve on council so that the city has a city council. Mr. Rob and I, yes, Mr. Rob and I will serve as president of city council, not voting, parliamentarian, so that the city still has a government. We would then select a neutral third-party attorney who's very experienced in this area of the law, submit to him the questions, let him render a binding legal opinion on these questions that the council agrees to abide by. That way, the, the people of the city of Melsville get their elected officials and they get a government. The people who recuse themselves are not in any way prejudiced in any way, shape or form. And the question of the president is solved because it would either be one of us, non-voting, and the city goes on and, and we get a fair, neutral opinion. And I, I cannot see anything wrong about that solution, but that would be a solution that we would suggest.
I have a question. Who has more authority, authority in the situation?
Sir, don't be time for public comments, let, let the council talk and then the public will have a chance. I know this.
Can I say something? I think, I think the biggest issue that this, that this council is facing, and I do appreciate you two working together on this, is did Mrs. Nguyen truly rescind her, her resignation within 11 hours or so? And if they don't accept that, then he shouldn't be sitting there because he was four hours, four days before he rescinded his.
Well, let's not address those issues today because we're not going to.
But I believe that's the issue, that's what all this is about, is she's not on council because of that.
The issues, Jonathan, please jump in here. The two issues we would submit to an independent third party would be, number one, and number one is, who rightfully is sitting in Greg Smith's seat? Well, we can frame that in whatever neutral language, it's got to be framed in neutral language. We'll frame it in whatever neutral language there is. That would be number one. Number two is simple, who's president of the city council? Those are the two issues that we would propose to submit. And please jump in, Jonathan. The reason the third issue about Ms. Nguyen, I don't think, is if you look, we have Bob Toy's decision that clearly states that you can, council has to act before, council has to act to accept a resignation before the resignation is rescinded. So, I mean, that's the legal depi, opinion you guys asked for last name, long before I was around. So that ain't got nothing to do with me.
So I have not had a chance to study enough to give a informed opinion on Mr. Toy's opinion, but my sense is the attractiveness may call for a judicial termination. But depending on how that is brought is a question that is of some practical difficulty. But I, so I'm not necessarily disagreeing with what Mr. Volta Lini just said, but I'm not agreeing either.
So, Mr. Parliamentarian, what would be our next step if, I think that's a, would be a good solution to still take care of the town?
Our next step as far as which scenario, the, the going to judicial solution or the agreeing on six council member solution?
Oh, I'm sorry. So, question, if we went with the six council members, would, would we then still fill that empty seat and then eventually go back?
The neutral third party will tell who's in the neutral, who's in that third seat.
Okay, and then once that happens, then everything is back to normal and we can go on with the business.
Two questions.
Yes.
Is Mr. Clement or are you president?
I am president.
Okay. That's it, the neutral third party would decide to have, a neutral third party would decide who sits in Mr. Smith's seat. What, and, and this is why we have two attorneys sitting here, we may not agree on the third part. I would not submit the question whether you're on council or not because I don't think that's an issue. But Mr. Rob and I would discuss that and that may be another question that would be submitted. But that's, that would be between the two of us and you would have to trust, all of you, and the city would have to trust that we are operating with each other in good faith and trying to follow the law. And I can tell you in two weeks that Mr. Rob has been as honest and straightforward with me as anybody could be. I've been very impressed, so.
I'm going to ask the city manager the question. Sure. Hey, Mr. Ken Jemmy, are you there?
Yes, what question do you want to ask?
Well, I, I guess I just wanted to clarify, just, just for the sake of the public that just a few days ago, you appointed me interim city attorney through May 31st and I accepted that, that appointment. And, and I also, that was another thing that Mr. Volta Lini and I had discussed, which is why we had prepared that ordinance for council's consideration tonight, essentially appointing us as dual legal council for the city through May 31st. Which was.
That is correct.
And my understanding is that you had made that recommendation to council.
Had I a chance to make that recommendation to council, the council should have seen the same information that was sent to me.
Understood, thank you.
I do have something to say yet again, I have not received any information because somebody turned off my email. So that needs to be rectified. Because I am on council.
Question, with all the seats that are in dispute, how, how do you suggest council decide on this decision?
Well, unless council can't agree, there's not going to, our opinion would be there can't be a meeting.
Right.
If you can agree on which seven are going to sit tonight, you can have a meeting. Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, so I, I agree with that, the charter's clear, a quorum is four, so there has to be at least four. And the charter's equally clear that council is seven members. So in order to have a lawful meeting, there has to be between four and seven members of council. Now, I would, one thing I would just let Madam Clerk know, regardless of the legality of the meeting, there still would need to be minutes finalized, so. I, I know Mr. Volta Lini and I both appreciate your faithful service to this.
Absolutely.
Just my question out of the tent sitting here, how, how these, just we go about deciding what seven or four or five?
We just issue opinions, the council has to figure out how to do it. If you want to go into executive council and discuss it, if you want to discuss it in public, understanding that anyone who recuses himself tonight and.
Karen takes off again, says no signal.
If I, if I may, just have a slight disagreement with my.
Of course.
My, my fellow member of the bar. I would strongly suggest keeping any and all discussions in the public because I think the public deserves to hear and know, and I, I don't think.
I don't think.
I think that executive session would, would be appropriate, but anyway, not to disagree, but just.
So my suggestion would be that we remain with the people that were actually elected by the citizens of Melsville for the six and allow the independent council to decide who takes a seventh seat.
Yes, Dan.
If Mr. Dunphy will agree, I will recuse myself tonight so you can get back to the six and then let the independent person make that decision. I think that's the only fair and applicable and legal way to do it.
Yeah, I would, the only thing I would say is that Ofa was appointed, so there's another question you have to answer, so. She's in contention too, so if everybody in contention steps out, I'll do it.
I'm not elected. I'm not in contention, he was not voted in.
So to Mr. Dunphy's point, I, I don't want to make things more difficult for everybody, but can, can Mr. Rob and I talk about this?
Sure, absolutely.
But make your point first and then. Well, actually. No, go ahead, now that I think about it, I don't think I actually.
Now you're supposed to say, and another thing.
Please.
We have a minute to talk.
Absolutely.
Because in our statement, what, what we said is absolutely true. We have not discussed the merits of anything going on with council, nothing. We have said, and I believe you contacted me to start, perhaps, I can't even, it doesn't.
Actually, I think you called me and then I returned the call.
No, no. Anyway, anyway. We have only discussed how to get council running, that's it.
Right.
I mean, we haven't talked, opinions about who should be on council, who shouldn't, who's this, who's that. We haven't talked about that. Our only goal is how do we get council running again? And I think you guys want council to run, nobody wants us to sit here and not do anything.
Absolutely.
So, but if, if we could talk just briefly.
Absolutely.
And then.
Yeah, that'd be fine. Where would you like to do that?
We'll take a break or.
Which room or where would you like to go to?
One of us comes out, always one of us comes out.
You must be staring.
They'll be twisting the one off that jury.
Just what constitutes an action by the council on accepting a resignation?
That's an excellent question, I mean.
Look, if accepting a resignation, does it have to be in a meeting? Or can it be as somebody resigned, council member says, okay, I accept your resignation? And the hack's applied.
So I've done some research, I haven't repeated it and presented it, but.
My question is, because when resigned and before he could go. Before he, before he could resign.
Mr. Ofa. Mr. Ofa, allow him to go to the meeting, please, so that we can. So feel free to speak among yourselves. However long it takes, the gentleman.
When they get done, are you going to open up for public because I have a suggestion about that. That's really helpful.
I don't think so.
It ain't up to you, Craig, you, you resigned back.
No, I'm going to shut up.
Let's let the attorneys come back.
Enough, everyone.
Yeah, you just buy, you just buy the MDA right there. Keep doing it, Tony.
Actually, if you agree the MDA, you were.
All parties, all parties and you are named party, Tony, keep going and watch where you end up.
That is completely uncalled for, Mr. Dunphy. There isn't better, some decorum. We are, we are servants of the people. So act professional, we please wasn't it up and said. I did not, I did not say insulting. I said speak.
Anyway, I got a really good suggestion, I'd like to make them. I, I, first off, you and two, both agreed to step back, I don't know what's the problem. Actually, you thought Coloreto was pretty important, Ohio, like you did.
What is the secret there, do you think?
Even if the attorney John got involved, he would have to go to the court. They would take the city more including and.
Well, those two should have invited me on call. I want to talk more about.
I can knock on the door. I can knock on the door and ask, you know. He's still there, but he would have liked to be in that conversation.
Well.
Well, I mean, I want to know why, yes, Rita went in the door. I just heard him say that. As I was talking.
Well, here's, we have two proposals, and District Jimmy can certainly give his due sense worth. How's that sound? Is that okay?
That sounds fine.
Is that okay?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Me first, you sure? My suggestion is, the elected six. What was my suggestion? It was the.
It's the first day of six.
Six.
Everyone else recues.
Yeah, thank you. The elected six, everyone else recuses. Ms. Sonic would act as president, because she's vice president both ways. And that's my suggestion. That gives you more than a quorum, it gives you the ability to get four votes.
My idea was just picking off of Ms. Powell, Mr. Dunphy's idea that Ms. Powell, Mr. Dunphy, Ms. Winn, Mr. Clement would all recuse themselves, Mr. Lawson, I guess it's not that's one name we wouldn't have to worry about. That gives four, there's a quorum, the vice president would chair the meeting just to get through the agenda for tonight. And the clerk would just, in the minutes, record Ms. Powell's claim, Mr. Dunphy's claim, Ms. Winn's claim, Mr. Clement's claim, and Mr. Lawson's claim to the various. See, just to put on the record, their claims, and then we proceed with the agenda. Or, sorry, council will proceed with the agenda with the council.
But I am an elected council member.
Agreed.
So.
I'm not addressing her situation, I'm addressing mine.
Certainly, so that, I mean, I guess, given that, you could always just say you're not available to take the chair, in which case Ms. Sonic would, for purposes of this meeting.
Some, I can have them actually.
Well, here's my issue. Mr. Clement can't stay if I'm expected to leave. Because there's actually similar situation, although my rescension was quick. It would have been done within four hours if somebody hadn't shut off my city email.
And that's the whole idea of all of this is, we're never going to decide this. When I say we, council's never going to decide this amongst themselves, no, it's not going to happen. We need to have somebody who has no dog in this fight whatsoever to look at the law, look at the facts. And Mr. Robyn, I would be very scrupulous in even framing the question to the person is really important. It has to be neutrally framed, has to be. We can't say, well, Mr. Clement is president, however Ms. Winn claims she is or vice versa. You can't do any of that. It just has to be, here are the facts, here's the city charter. If you need anything else from us, submit written questions to both of us, we'll answer them together. It has to be that way, including the very framing of the question, I think you'd agree, has to be completely neutral.
Exactly.
Completely, to be fair to everybody.
I agree with your proposal.
Yes.
Go back to the original six, allow a neutral party to make the final decision as to who gets seated and the empty seat.
I think that's fair.
There'll be no concessions with this council, you'll have to do it, just like we said.
We don't have the power to do it, council has to do it.
I mean, no to get to set with the.
No, we reserved our thoughts, we reserved ourselves who we're going to pick and how we're going to frame the question. That's reserved to us. And you have to trust that we're working together to the good of the council and the good of the citizens.
Correct.
Seeing how we have the six text now, seeing how for Ms. Winn, we have a vice president, seeing how for Ms. Clement, we have a vice president, and can the council resolve to do the presidency over to Ms. Sonic? With remainder of proceedings.
If council agrees to that, I think that would be a fair resolution because she's vice president with both votes.
The issue is that there are still, how many members? Nine, eight members?
Ten.
Ten nowadays, okay. So the issue is still the same, there can only be seven members. And in the case that we originally started with, before this whole mess, it was six. When Mr. Smith resigned, there were still six of us.
Could anybody possibly agree to letting the two attorneys?
Is this council discussion or is this?
This is council discussion.
She's gonna allow me to speak at some point, but.
Can we just, please, don't give it over.
All right, now, order please.
I mean, we think the fairest thing to do is parliotarian president, president parliotarian, non-vote.
Correct, and I'm fine with that.
That way, everything is completely neutral.
And we go to the six.
And we go to the six.
And we go to the independent attorney to figure out the seventh.
These are our suggestions, only you guys can agree. We can't, we have no power to enforce what we're suggesting. We think this will be the fairest way to do it. We talked about this for two weeks.
I think for the citizens, it's the fairest way to do that.
I agree.
The way you just said, the citizens do not have to sit through this, I think is a very important thing to move the city forward, to have ordinances and product in front of us that can help the city. So I think that is the best way, if we can just agree to have the people that are going to recuse themselves to do that.
Now, we have a very interesting problem. Yeah, very interesting. Who votes to approve that plan?
If the.
No, I still say it's the original six. They get two votes.
If. If you two agree to recuse yourself tonight, then we have a quorum, they could vote.
I recuse myself.
I don't.
I will.
Unless Rita and both of the.
No.
If everybody who's in question recuses everybody and be done.
No stipulations.
That's it.
No stipulations.
So. Well, now you have, but if.
I won't, I won't recuse unless Mr. Dunphy does.
And we still have one other question over here.
Which is the fair thing to do.
Why don't you call the judge, take the case, and let it judge.
Well, as Mr. Robyn pointed out, it's not going to be a judge, it's going to be a series of judges and a series of courts.
I'm sure. And if you think it's going to get decided in this room, we're wasting our time.
You're one person away from deciding it.
It's up to Mr. Dunphy, really.
Ms. Sonic, please.
It's up to you, you resign.
Tony.
You're on an order, Tony. Please don't listen to me.
If I may, at the floor.
You may.
Yes, you may.
Please, now you and I have talked about this.
Okay.
It's for the good of the city. I understand where you come from.
Yep.
But, please.
Okay.
Just go on with it, please. Retuse yourself. Get on.
Retuse yourself.
Please, Tony, please. Tony, you know it's for the good of the city, just do it.
What happens if they come back that Rita's resignation was never?
Right now, we're not talking about anything like that, we're trying to decide if this council is going to keep on going.
You're on an order, ma'am, please. We're not taking comments from the citizens.
I think, and I think, I think we would agree, it's really important before council votes, take questions from the public. This is way too important.
All right.
Would you agree?
If you're ready for public discussion.
Yes, please, sir.
A limited time.
Hold on.
Limits in time, please.
Yes, just give me a minute. Just go ahead, Ms. Robyn.
I think it's important to provide a forum for the public to provide comments. Perhaps what if we did this? As we were coming in before we all were in the room, I was in the hallway talking to Mr. Boltelini about another idea that would, I haven't even run it by the city manager, so perhaps while the public has an opportunity to share their thoughts, if Mr. Boltelini and I could just go back into the other room and have another call with the city manager. If that's okay with everyone.
I don't know what to stop, like, oh, listen, just.
If you want to go back and talk, could you just be here for public comment because?
We do need to have people here for the public comment.
That's fine, I'm fine. So, I, we apologize, but can we take a little?
Yes, take your time.
Okay.
And whenever you're ready, when you come back, we'll.
Can we call him on your phone?
Yeah, we can hang up with him here and he can.
Okay.
All right, Tom, I'm going to hang up here and Jonathan's going to call you.
He's out on a date, what you got?
Tom, can you hear me?
It's still daylight and I don't know.
Yeah, I'll be home in a personal time.
Okay.
I know, thank you.
Well, that means you're.
I'm gonna eat you drunk nowadays, I mean, one drink and they can think of me as a DUI.
If you look at eleven.
You have a form, one, two, three, four.
Eleven oh eight in the city charter has a specific, has a specific procedure for removing somebody from office. Yeah, we go through eleven oh eight of the city charter.
Well, now we haven't decided who's got what, but if we go through and for a temporary vote.
Then you have to bring an action under eleven oh eight of the city charter, which requires a ten day notice, a full hearing. And then the office stays open until, until the appeal time for that hearing.
So then we have, we go nowhere.
That's right. Councilmen have that power tonight to do that.
Alright, I got my question.
Yep, okay. Anybody else?
Jimmy? I was gonna ask Matt, uh, who amongst this council or city manager thinks they have the power to shut her emails off?
I can't answer that.
Is that because she's a woman?
I can't, I can't answer any of those questions. I honestly goodness do not know. I don't know.
Well.
Do you know?
No.
No. We don't know. And maybe someone on council knows.
I would love to know because my email has been shut off more than once.
Yeah.
In the last three months.
You can ask Mr. Jimmy.
And she sneezes, they shut it off.
Exactly. It has happened.
It's ridiculous.
Three, maybe four times.
Don't know.
And if the city manager's doing it, he needs to be.
He did it because I called Rita. Point of order, who does the city auditor, did, did everybody get the city auditor's report? Did you get it?
Read it.
You got his, his statement?
His statement?
Yeah.
Uh, no, we're not doing that. We're currently doing.
Who is, who gets paid?
You are out of order.
He's asking a question.
I've been paid.
Point of order, we were taking citizens' comments at this time.
I've thrown out paperwork and I've paid.
So. Any other comments from our citizens?
No, I don't care.
No, he's asking about councilman.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I mean.
Enough, please.
Yeah, no, don't start. I've started this yet because this quarreling, are we on here?
We are.
You can see what happens to our council. You can sorry, this is what happens to the charter council. Argue in a court cross room, nothing ever settled. And it's not working. It's not working. This is the most ridiculous thing I've ever seen. Five thousand people and should be working for the citizens and for the city of Nelsonville. That is all. I mean, this is so ridiculous. We elected council members last November, didn't we?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
And I got the list right here.
Read them out.
So what happened to them? Greg Smith, Greg Clement, John Flowers, Justin Root.
Last, last fall.
But whatever, you were, were you on council on, were you, were you on council December? Were you on this council in December?
I did not have the first election. My seat was not up last November.
That's not what I'm asking. You can see what happens. You're not gonna get an answer either. It's not working and it won't work. I hope you guys can come up with something, but I hate to say it won't work. We're the laughing stock of towns and boroughs. And it's most ridiculous for five thousand people, you know? But I, I thank you guys for what you're trying to do, but I cannot see this working. But I just read off, uh, oh, I, I stopped it. Rita, Corey Taylor, and Nancy. That's who we voted for last November.
Justin did.
And Justin, yes.
And you're absolutely right. Counsel is supposed to work for the folks in town, for the citizens.
For the city.
For the city. That is the only job council is supposed to have.
We, we know what it used to be under mayor and the boards, the, your councilman lived in your, where you, where they lived. They, Carl Young was my authority. Any problem, he took care of it. This is ridiculous.
I agree. Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments from our citizens? Comments from any business owners?
Please, yes?
Yeah, I would like to make a comment, uh.
I said business owners.
You said business owners.
Please, go ahead.
Alright, I'll probably call any comments. I think enough to chat already tonight.
I would like to ask Mr. Rowan, have you read Mr. Sappington's, um, letter? Is this? Yes, but I, I chose answers to questions I asked.
If I may say.
I have the floor, thank you. I, I haven't read every word, but I have. Okay.
Ask the question.
Okay, so if I may say, I can tell you Mr. Sappington does not have a law degree. I read it. So whatever comments he might have put in there are irrelevant.
Do you have a vote pick?
For one minute he doesn't want to pay a lawyer and the next minute he wants to pay a lawyer. So that sounds like extortion to me.
It's a council discussion.
Okay.
Really?
Please, let's keep order. So the, the bottom line is, what are we doing, gentlemen? Are we doing the initial six?
That's not our decision.
That's not their decision.
I am aware of that.
That's the decision of council. I think you would agree. And if you can agree on who the proper seven are to vote tonight, then you can take that vote and, and obviously it all has to be done by resolution, but at least we can get a start on it tonight. If we can agree on which seven are gonna vote.
Six.
Yeah, six.
No, not seven.
No, seven? We can, we can, well, yeah, if, if they, I, I can't count, I'm sorry. So there'd be one, two, three, four, five, six, yes. If we can, if we can come to that agreement, sure, would you agree?
So we had a, we had a question though that was given, you know, asked of the county prosecutor and one of his prosecutors provided a written letter, which then put on Taylor to make the statements. And so that just sounded like, have you read that? Have you seen that letter as well?
Yeah.
I, I think the, the one thing that I, I might add, so, um, if I'm understanding the city auditor's statement or whatever you want, uh, term, it, I did not take it as a legal opinion because of course the city auditor can't render a legal opinion. However, the city auditor does have a unique role in city government as kind of the last line of defense for the city finances. Meaning if, uh, council were to drop the ball, the city manager were to drop the ball, the city attorney were to drop the ball, the city auditor does have an independent legal duty to ensure the fiscal responsibility of the city. And I took it, and again, I'm not saying I necessarily agree with Mr. Sappington or disagree with Mr. Sappington. I have, I need to actually study this, um, and study the, uh, the legal points that, that might be implicated. But my, my view of the city auditor role is that the city auditor has an independent legal duty to the city. And he has to make certain determinations. Whether or not a judge or another, you know, binding authority says he's right or says he's wrong is a different question, but I do think the city auditor has independent legal duty to determine how he is supposed to, uh, fulfill his duties because he has sworn an oath not to me, not to any one individual, but to the law. And in his particular role, he has to determine, uh, how he is supposed to fulfill that, that oath.
And per the letter that Mr. Warren had written, it, it, it stated a, a section of the charter of his, of the auditor's duties and, and what he should be providing. Um, and that's why I believe Mr. Clement asked him those questions, you know, to answer those questions and, and it appears that's why.
Well, to full disclosure, the first thing he says, I can't render a legal opinion. You've got city attorney.
But he didn't ask for a legal opinion.
Yes, he did. Mr. Clement did. Did you not ask for legal opinion, sir?
My questions are right there on the top.
There you go. And he specifically said, now, can I, can I clear all this up?
Yes.
Because we've had, we've gone, when I say we, city council's got too much without attorney. So everyone's saying, well, Mr. Volta Lini doesn't have a contract. Maybe I do, maybe I don't, I don't care. What I do have, what I do have is an ordinance appointing me city attorney. That's separate from a contract. Contract tells me how much I get paid. I don't get paid, I don't get paid. By God, I'm city attorney because there's an ordinance, okay?
Exactly.
You, because you don't have a city attorney, everyone's guessing. Everyone's saying, Mr. Sappington's saying, well, I'm not gonna pay him, I'm not.
So just to clarify though, he did not ask for a legal opinion from Mr. Sappington?
No. Well, Mr. Clement asked for legal opinion from the prosecutor's office.
Correct.
Right.
But not from Taylor? You didn't ask?
No.
Okay.
No.
Well, you just said that, that's why I was clarifying.
No, 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 no.
That's not what he said.
No, I apologize. What I'm saying is everyone's guessing, well, Mr. Volta Lini doesn't have a contract. Well, no, maybe I do, maybe I don't. I mean, that's something for a judge to decide. Praying to God it doesn't get to that. But if it does, that's where the judge will decide. I've never claimed a contract. What I'm saying is I was appointed by ordinance. I'm city attorney.
Exactly.
You were appointed as special counsel.
Okay, special counsel.
There is a distinction.
Yes, there is. And I agree, I apologize. I, you're right, Mr. Clement, I apologize. You're absolutely right. Thank you. Yeah. And, but the point is, because we've operated all this time without advice of council, everyone's guessing. And there's no guess. I'm special counsel and is my contract valid? Who knows? Well, I think it is, but we'll let the course decide. That's not my. And I'm certainly not gonna, not gonna get in a conflict of interest and claim, yeah, by God, pay me blah, blah, blah. That's not, that's not my concern. My concern is what we have been doing for two weeks on our own time, which is trying to put before the citizens of Nelsonville a solution to this that's fair to everyone. Not only fair, scrupulously fair. Something that nobody can claim is not fair. And that's all, that's all we can do. And, and if that doesn't happen, then everybody races to the courthouse and good luck then, because we're both litigators, it ain't fun. And I really have nothing more to say, but please. Well, I've got nothing more to say.
Can I say one thing?
Yes, sir.
It's, it's evident that we're not gonna make any kind of decisions here tonight. That's my opinion also. That no one's gonna hudge on, I'll recuse, if you recuse, no, I'm not recusing, I'm not getting up unless she gets up. We're not gonna do anything like that. So my suggestion is, let's get the hell out of here.
Or ask one more time, if we can come to that.
Before we do that, I'd like to move that we, uh, read Mr. Sappington's letter at your record. Show everyone that one. Yeah, should we, should we read, should we read Mr. Clement's questions?
It is not a meeting. That is what he said in the very beginning. He said, you cannot.
I'm sorry, I'm speaking.
No, no, I understand that, but I am saying.
It was called an order. You don't get to talk loud to me just because you tried.
He specifically said.
Yeah, he is. I'm not, you're all, you're not.
May I suggest we call, may I suggest we call Mr. K. Jimmy and ask him if it's a meeting?
Well, it, it was clarified by Mr. Rowan.
Read the letter.
Mr. K. Jimmy has an opinion on whether this is a meeting. Would you like to hear it?
Read the letter.
That's not on order, please. What was Mr. K. Jimmy's opinion?
Read it.
They don't wanna hear it, I'm not gonna say anything.
So, so the clerks asked me to read this.
What clerks?
The clerk.
What are you reading?
Madam Clerks asked me to read this, um, from the city auditor.
Um, but this is not a meeting. That is the point I was.
We are, we are. So do you not want the residents to hear what the questions to Mr. Sappington were and what Mr. Sappington's answers are?
The point of, the point that we were trying to do.
Obviously, I see your question, I'm just.
I'm trying to answer, if you will allow me, the point we were trying to do here was to come to a decision, a conclusion of how we're going to move forward. That is it. This is not a meeting. Both of the attorneys said that in the very beginning of our gathering.
Although, although they're early minutes.
Of the business.
And all the orders are.
They, we are not doing anything else other than making that choice. Now, I do have a question. If we can't come to a decision tonight.
We're not in a meeting, we can't come.
Are we?
Please listen.
I don't find this really very funny or wrong.
It is not. This is not.
This really isn't funny.
No.
It's only a meeting when it's here for her.
We spent two hours. We need to have an order yet.
This is not a meeting, you are correct.
It is not a meeting. So my question is, if we are speaking, let me finish. If we do not come to an agreement, we could not move forward and have meetings in the future. Is that correct?
Now, the bait or not? Would you agree, Mr. Rowan? With eight or nine, we can't, they can't properly have a meeting. Charter says council is a seven number bond, right?
Okay.
Can I read it? May I?
Yes, ma'am.
What you have presented.
No, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
What you have presented earlier this evening was to take everything to an independent council or not council attorney.
No, council, correct, an attorney, an experienced attorney in this particular area of law.
In, uh, municipal government.
Right.
Okay. And to do that, it will take the six elected council people that are here tonight to vote for that procedure. Am I correct?
Yeah. It would take a resolution.
Okay.
And for a vote.
Okay. Does that mean come back at another meeting when there's a resolution prepared? Or does that mean vote for the resolution tonight to have somebody prepare it?
I, I think the bottom line is, the bottom line, I think, is that any meeting coming forth in the future, if there are, if there continues to be more than the seven members that the council has, we cannot have meetings, which means we cannot conduct.
There can't be any.
Tony and I, Tony and I would have to recluse ourselves.
Right.
And the other thing is, the auditor evidently is biased or made a decision because I just heard Tony say he's getting paid. He's on the council, he's on, he's on the council, uh, email stream. Nothing came to me about paperwork that I need to fill out for getting paid, Norma, I own the council.
So Taylor's making legal decisions on his own.
No, it's Taylor's opinion. Since we're talking about.
Let's read it, let's, let's read it, Mr. Rowan. Let's, let's read it.
Mr. Rowan, please.
Read it, Mr. Rowan, please, read it.
Yes.
Not, no, please, yes.
So pursuant to the instructions of the board, I've been instructed to read this. Uh, I'll start with, uh, so this is from Mr. Clement, sent on March twentieth, twenty twenty four to Taylor Sappington, city auditor. Subject questions. Hi, Taylor, I have a couple of questions for you. Could you please clarify who the members of council are that will be receiving city council payments? Is Tony Dunphy on council receiving monthly payments? Is Sue Powell on council and receiving monthly payments? Is Matt Volta Lini being paid for services since Tom did not sign his contract and we voted to dismiss him as city council? Am I now in the system as president of the council? Is Rita still being paid as president and or council member? Thank you, Nelsonville City Council President, Ray Clement.
Again, the reason I stated that that should not be read is because those questions are the very questions that we are having an issue with. There is no reason.
Since president, it's right, yes, it's not president.
Public record, it's public records we're treating. And so here's the, from Taylor Sappington, to, to, to be fair, Mr. Sappington's opinion, Mr. Sappington's, is a financial opinion, it's not a legal.
It's a financial opinion. So he's, I think it should be read into the record. This is, this is Mr. Sappington doing his job.
Fine. So if Mr. Sappington is here, could he read it? Maybe give context of what he's talking about?
No.
It was. Is Taylor out there?
Yeah.
I'm here. I'd be happy to read it.
Well, we've already asked the attorney.
Just a second while I bring it up. Alright, the questions to me were already read, so I will just read my response. Uh, I'm gonna guess, some folks are gonna like it, some folks aren't, but my job, Susan's job, the public information officer's job is, um, not, uh, to be the final decider on these issues. It's to, best we can, observe the legal counsel, observe the council or councils, um, as well as other administrators and do our best to act on those observations.
How did you decide on whose legal counsel?
Yeah.
I'm just gonna read my response and then I'll, I'll take a few questions if I can answer.
Simple question. You've already made a decision on whose legal counsel.
I'm about to.
Okay, everyone.
Let him get it over with.
All right, he's your boss, that's fine.
I wrote there, hello there, council president. I'll do my best to answer your questions in turn. I guess I'm restating some of what I just said. The conditions under which the city's public information officer, the council clerk, and the finance office are working are extremely difficult given the circumstances, especially considering the attempted dismissal of the city's attorney by the former president and the extremely bewildering and conflicting information with the special counsel, not him personally. What special counsel means, who they answer to, what their role is, what the relationship is to administration like myself are all questions that seem to have no answer. This is a terrible set of circumstances to work with. That said, these are the facts as best I can understand them under these conditions. The council had five members attending a regularly scheduled meeting where you all proceeded to let council appointee candidates speak for less than five minutes in total. The council then took a vote where the five members broke down like this. Three for the appointment of Tony Dunphy and two for the appointment of Sue Powell. Considering that three is a majority of five members and Charter section four point oh three states, and I state vacancies shall be filled by an appointment of a qualified person, the appointment shall be made by a majority vote of council, and so on and so forth. Once this vote was taken and recorded, the vacancy was filled by Mr. Tony Dunphy as far as I can tell. Mr. Dunphy then asked if I would be willing to swear him in into the seat after this vote. I agreed, having observed this vote. And he was then sworn in by myself as well as a notary at a second time. Though Mrs. Nguyen attempted to invoke the council president's power to fill the vacancy, there seems to be a fatal misunderstanding. It states that this can only happen within fifteen days of the council's failure to fill the seat. That failure does not seem to be present as Mr. Dunphy had already been appointed by a vote of the council that Mrs. Nguyen participated in as well. By definition, there cannot be eight members of council. Understatement. By definition, there cannot be eight members of council. Effectively, this means that the finance office will be issuing a council member stipend to Mr. Dunphy. I do not see how I could legally or ethically issue payment to anyone else, including Mrs. Powell. I have not, I have not asked her, as was stated earlier, to submit your council paperwork, and I don't believe that I could pay her even if she had submitted it. As to Mr. Volta Lini and payments, I believe it is extremely important to note what the auditor's actual role is. It is not the auditor's responsibility to decide who does and does not get paid. My responsibility is to ensure the following. Is there an appropriation? Is there proper documentation such as a signed contract or staffing ordinance? Is there council authorization? Is this payment ethical, safe, and legal? Have all questions, excuse me, necessary steps and compliance and procedures been followed before the payment? Are there any conflicts of interest? It is the city managers and city councils authorizations and appropriations that decide if someone gets paid. And I underline, not the city auditor. It is my job to ensure these steps have been completed and protect the funds until dispersment. I do have the following. A contract regarding quote unquote city attorney was signed by Mrs. Nguyen, and I have questions about the dating, the language, the position title, and the authorization. I also have an ordinance from the council expressing a desire to hire Mr. Volta Lini as special counsel. That said, I do not have the following. A city manager appointment of Mr. Volta Lini as law director or city attorney, signed special counsel contract from an authorized signer of the city, which would be the city manager in all circumstances. A W nine from Mr. Volta Lini, which I have requested. There is an appropriation question. There are funds appropriated for legal services for the position of law director. However, best I can tell, Mr. Volta Lini's title is not law director. So the council may need to appropriate funds before he can be paid as special counsel. It is not reasonable for anyone to expect the auditor to issue payment for services that have no appropriation from the council. It's not legal. And I also need final approval from the city manager, who is the purchasing agent for the city, to pay the invoice and approve for it. Therefore, with the facts as I understand them stated above, I have not paid Mr. Volta Lini for the initial invoice as special counsel. I cannot speak to whether the necessary steps that I have clearly laid out for everyone here will be completed as those steps will need to be completed by the council and the city manager. Next question. Yes, I have entered in Mr. Clement as council president. As at the special meeting, there was a vote of four to nothing where he was appointed.
There was no quorum at that meeting.
Mrs. Nguyen is entered into the system as council member, not president. As of three twenty one, two thousand twenty four. I understand there to be significant questions surrounding the position. Since the resignation was effective immediately, thereby vacating it immediately, that said, she has attempted to rescind her resignation in writing, and there are questions about whether she can do so, whether the council has objections to rescinding.
Um, I want to. I.
Of have publicly in writing and verbally objected to Mrs. Nguyen still being considered president and some as a council member at all. Since then, Mrs. Nguyen has participated in several regularly scheduled meetings as well as council discussions and has voted on ordinances and resolutions in those meetings as well. Beyond this, at a special meeting, there was a vote of four to nothing to replace the position as council president and maintain Mrs. Sonic as vice president. And I have an update at the special meeting last week, as many of us saw. The, uh, council president Clement appointed Mr. Lawson to the seat. This is all to say that with this competing information and the facts as best as I can translate, Mrs. Nguyen is slated to receive the regular council stipend of one hundred dollars on Friday, March twenty second and is not interested in the system as council president. I was notified that there are members of the council who state that Mrs. Nguyen held her seat until it was filled due to the resignation according to three point oh one of the Ohio revised code. Further, some have stated that there was never a vote to accept her rescission and that that left the resignation in place. These were the reasons given for the latest actions as I've described. I believe this answers the question, answers your questions. And if you need anything else, please let me know.
That's all of it?
That's it.
Okay. So I do wanna make some clarifications. First of all, I never said I'm resigning immediately, okay? And most of what you read, you are quoting Charter, you're quoting Ohio revised code, and in so doing, you're interpreting it yourself as to whatever you think it is. And that is the question that we are trying to solve right now. And you're stating it like it's a matter of fact.
Yes.
And it is not.
I say as much as I can as a matter of fact. If you listen to my phrasing, most of it is an observation.
So what does it take to remove a, a president of council?
Mrs. Powell can speak strongly to the fact that in the state of Ohio, mistakes even by the council can be held against the fiscal officer. So say, uh, there's a question of who gets paid what, the fiscal officer can be held as much as the individual for owing that money back. So what that means is that the decision has to be carefully considered, the decision has to be as backed up with as much documentation as possible. And frankly, um, my job is to observe you folks. And, uh, that has been difficult. And, uh, that has been difficult. So I appreciate that there may be disagreements. I said, you may not like it, but that's as best as I can observe the facts, or if then, as I can. I guess that's in line with it.
So Taylor, did you not read in the charter where the appointment of a president is a biannual position? And if she has to be removed cause? Was that ignored? Because it was a takeover of presidency.
Uh, as far as I can tell, there was a vote by the city council of four to nothing to replace the position and maintain the vice presidency. The auditor is not regulating council votes.
Professional.
Taylor, can I ask you?
I, I don't regulate council votes.
Taylor, can I ask you a question now? Those, uh, Matt Volta Leeny made a ruling before all this happened. And you might say that, that he might, you might not be able to pay him. But the, the contract clearly put him in charge of the legal thing, and he made rulings. And did you, did you consider his rulings as part of your decisions?
I did read them, but I'm, I'm not an attorney. I did read them. I will say that as far as I can tell on the map, uh, the opinion on a majority, uh, that came from the past was issued. I was there. I was on the council, I was one of the six.
Well, you know, his opinion was that, that Miss Nguyen could not be removed as president. That was, that was his opinion before it happened. And it was issued even everybody else, right? So how, how could you then make a decision that she is not the council president and then start paying Greg as the council president?
And you know what? It's not even the money. You don't even have to pay me. I mean, it's a couple hundred dollars a month, you can keep it. That's not my issue.
Can I ask you one question?
Yeah.
Your office called me two, three weeks ago and said they were gonna pay me eight hundred whatever dollars for when I sat in. Where was that money appropriated from?
Uh, to be honest, we never got to that point because, uh, we were trying to resolve the W nine question.
Well, that's not what I was told. I was told I was gonna be paid.
Were you told that by me?
No, I was told by your secretary, the lady who called. They said, please send the W nine so we can get you paid, is what I was told.
I, I wasn't there for that conversation. My best understanding was we wanted to get you as a vendor in the system. So that the city manager could make a decision on the purchasing thumbs up or thumbs down. Uh, we never got to that step.
Has the city manager told you that to pay me for that night?
The city manager asked me to put it in front of him on our software system, which is his final call. And, uh, then I do the final checks that I mentioned earlier.
Would it surprise you if he told me last night he authorized that payment? Because that's what he told me last night.
Tell you, if he told.
That's what he told me last night, yes, sir.
Well, I can appreciate that a conversation may have taken place. I, I can act when it's in the system. When, when there is an actual approval with a signature, I can act.
Okay. So somebody was lying, either Mr. Ken Jimmy was. I don't think you are. I think, I think. I, I'm sure you have it, you, you would not sit here and tell me that you, if you had it, you would tell me. I know you would. I have no question about that. So Mr. Ken Jimmy was lying last night and you told him that.
I don't, I don't believe that. I think honestly it could be a misunderstanding of our process. I'm, I'm saying it's just.
I don't think the city manager could misunderstand that process.
I, I would not say he's lying. I'm just saying, if the city, the city manager is free to act as the purchasing agent. And he says, I'm, I'm approving or I'm going to approve, that can be interpreted a lot of ways, but not.
You know, I've been disrespected all the way around. I'm being disrespected tonight, which is fine. But at some point, doesn't someone have to shoot straight with me? Somebody, somewhere, sometime?
I just laid out every fact I could possibly.
And it's not your fault. I'm not, I'm not, I'm, you, you speak the truth tonight, I appreciate that, thank you. But I think maybe there's a problem, there, there's other problems we had tonight with the city attorney, or with the, with, with the city manager, but. That disturbs me when I, when I'm told yesterday, we're gonna get you paid, I already recommended. Look, I, I'll, I'll let you speak when we're done here. But clearly, you know, trying, maybe trying to soothe me by saying, well, pay you would get me to play ball or whatever, I don't know. But it didn't work. That's all I gotta say. I'm done. I'm not saying anything else. Go ahead. Sorry.
So. Not, not to, um. Disagree with Mr. Volta Leeny, but based on the conversation I had with Mr. Ken Jimmy, I would not say he lied. He told me he was. I don't remember his exact words, but they were to the effect that either he was going to approve the payment or had already. I'm not sure, but that's what he did tell me, okay? He did ask me what other steps we needed to, like, Friday or Saturday, I think. Um, and I just said a W nine and a vendor. And auditor speak for the software. So, so I have a question. So if he, if Mr. Ken Jimmy approves that, you still can't technically pay him until you have a W nine though, correct? I need a W nine. I laid out my questions. Uh, the appropriation question is an interesting one. Um, I, I don't have an appropriation. Um, I would want to resolve the contract contest. I'm sorry, not meaning as disrespectful. I'm trying to observe the council. It, it's much, it's much.
Of course it is. You've been, you've been the only one who hasn't been disrespectful.
I, I, I just, uh, I understand, um, that that's not the answer everyone wants, but there are questions. It is always easier, it's always easier to issue payment when the questions are resolved, hundred percent of the time. It's not like you issue payments when the question's unanswered.
So we are back at the same place we were. Before you came up here and read your opinion.
Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Taylor. So the question is still the same. Are you, Mr. Dunphy, willing to recuse yourself? So that the city can continue to do city business?
Only if you step down to.
I am not stepping down. I was selected.
There's your answer.
By the people of this city.
And you resigned.
And so did you.
And Greg, and so did you. You didn't challenge it.
But you didn't challenge it within forty-five days.
You resigned.
There's a difference. People were fooled when I told them to challenge it.
Okay, Mr. Dunphy, so the question is still the same. Are you willing to recuse yourself?
No.
Well, then we cannot have meetings, and that means that we cannot conduct. City business because we have too many council members.
There's a reason.
No, we're not, we're not, we're not. Uh, I think part of the, yeah, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. It's not.
It's not a meeting.
It's not a meeting.
It's not a meeting. It's not a meeting.
I can't hold it over me.